Hey everyone, welcome to the January 24th, 2022 Select Board Meeting. Is it the 24th? Yes. In accordance with an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law by Governor Baker, tonight's Select Board Meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom and will not be open to the public for physical attendance. The meeting is being recorded, livestreamed, and cable broadcast by the Eastern Community Access Television, which is Comcast 98 and Verizon 23, and on ECAT's website, www.eastoncat.org. This meeting is closed captioned. For the hearing impaired, if you're watching on your computer, you'll see a CC button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email the board at selectboard@easton MA.us. And if you're watching from an electronic device, please pose your question on the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom portal. Remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board Member to state their name to ensure we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Jamie Stevins.
Jennifer Stacy.
And I'm Dottie Full Genetti, and we have Michael Blanchard, our Assistant Town Administrator. So, thank you everyone for being here tonight. The first item we have on the agenda is a Conservation Commission appointment. There are two interviews. This is for a term of an expiration of June 30th, 2024. We have two applicants, Christine Atkinson and Nathan Crossman. We have both of them in the waiting room. We'll do this alphabetically and interview Christine first. And while she moves over, I'm just gonna quickly like breeze through what the charge of the Conservation Commission is for people that may not know. The Eastern Conservation Commission is responsible for planning for natural resource protection, acquiring important land and water areas, and managing these properties for natural conservation and passive recreation as set forth in the 1957 Conservation Commission Act, which authorized each city and town in Massachusetts to establish a locally appointed municipal agency to undertake these responsibilities. The Eastern Conservation Commission is also charged with the enforcement of two basic sets of laws. The Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, which identifies and protects eight public interests served by wetlands. The protection of public and private water supply, the protection of groundwater supply, flood control, storm damage prevention, prevention of pollution, prevention of land containing shellfish, protection of fisheries, and protection of wildlife habitat. The Act requires that anyone wishing to perform work that may affect wetlands must first apply for and obtain written permission from the Conservation Commission, which administers the Act locally. Let me see. So that's, that's pretty much it. The bylaw and its defining regulations were adopted to regulate activities deemed to have significant or cumulative effect on wetlands' values, including those eight values mentioned above. So Christine, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you very much for seeing me. I really appreciate it. As you know, I, I'm new to Easton, and we chose very carefully. It took us a year to find a new place to live. I had lived in Winchester for 32 years, and Walter, my partner, and I are now still in the process of moving out of Cambridge. It takes a long time. But I am definitely not a city person, and Easton filled the bill. When I first saw this property on Saddle Drive, I was completely won over when I found the species name is Michella ripens. It's partridge berry, and it was all around the corners of the property. And I thought, okay, that's it. This is the place. And I have been very, very impressed with Easton's historic ability to be able to conserve its lands. You've done such a terrific job. I think, you know, it's one in a million. And you don't have a lot of invasives. You really have done a terrific job in keeping the natural habitat. Now, as far as whether or not I'd be able to do this job, because I was looking at some of the minutes and some of the, the things that have to be done get rather complicated, you know, regarding wetlands. And it impresses me again that the town is very concerned that the spirit of the Wetland Act is going to be carried through. And I myself am now living right in the middle of it, you know. I now have to deal with a lot of these wetland. Interesting, I don't want to call them problems, they're challenges. You sometimes have to do things a little bit differently. But the training that I have had, you know, I, I was a foreign language undergraduate, and I loved to sing. But I did go on to get a doctorate in genetics. I'm a scientist, you know, did a lot of wet lab, wet lab work, as well as then worked in legal departments, and I was a searcher in patent law. So I have those two sides of it, of understanding the importance of the, the reading of the terms of a statute, as well as sometimes the, the physical and scientific things that go into it. I have worked as far as, you know, the non-professional things, the volunteer activities that I've done. I'm a very gung-ho Appalachian Mountain Club person, mostly because it's given me the opportunity to go to the most fascinating places to do trail work and to try and keep the trails and the nature accessible for people while keeping the wildlife and everything protected. So I've worked in Costa Rica and in the Virgin Islands, a lot in Maine and New Hampshire, and on the Cape. I'm also a plant conservation volunteer for Native Plant Trust, and I look at endangered species. We're not even allowed to tell you where they are. But I have, you know, experienced a lot of what's going on with habitat destruction on things that are, are near to people that they very often are not aware that, you know, dumping their lawn trash and things in a preserved place is going to damage the endangered species. So I do hope that you'll find that although I am new to this area, I'm a hard worker, and I do, I will come up to speed quickly to try and see what the town's intention is, you know, because you've already been doing a great job. I don't want to suddenly impose some outsider's vision of what you all want, but also to be able, sometimes to be able to offer more suggestions of things that have worked for people elsewhere to try and resolve a problem.
Well, thank you so much, Christine. That's such a great overview. I think one of the things that we really care about on the Conservation Commission, as with other commissions, is that people can be fair and impartial and really follow the statute. And, you know, we're trying to balance conservation with economic development. And so we, we really want somebody that can be open-minded and help people get to yes while following the rules. So we don't want somebody that's extreme on either side of the pendulum. We want somebody that really comes into it open-minded and, and looking at, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of constituencies that we serve. So we want to try to, you know, make sure that we're really helpful to the public when people come before that committee to really give them a lot of information and help them, you know, understand where they need to be, help them get there if they can. And if they can't, to let them know that right away.
Absolutely, because in many ways, you know, some of the things I've, I've worked, you know, when doing the trail work with Appalachian Mountain Club and with others. I'm a hike leader also for Sierra Club, and I work with master gardeners. And in those cases, very often what you have is where they have developed something, and they're trying to put it into the middle of a natural environment. And one of the trainings that I did with the National Parks was with using special pavements for trails so that they would properly let the water drain through and so on. So, you know, it, it's true that there are a lot of things that are available to make it possible for our people to be able to enjoy the natural places. So, yeah, I have definitely worked a lot with, you know, the, the people nature that, that, I don't want to call it an impasse because it's not, you know, it's making the trails usable. We have a saying in Appalachian Mountain Club of "leave no trace", and that is that we put in a trail so that there are no ankle busters. You can walk along and really enjoy it, but essentially think that, that you're out in the natural environment. So there is a lot of compromise that has to be done. And as I said, the track record of the town is spectacular. So I, I think I, I want to learn how they've been able to do this so well.
Great. Well, thank you for choosing Easton. We're glad you like it here so far. I'm gonna, we're gonna just have each board member ask if they have any questions. And then when these questions are completed, we're gonna interview the next candidate because it is contested. And then at the end, we'll deliberate and vote. And if you're chosen, you'll hear from our town clerk about next steps. So we appreciate you being here tonight. So Craig, do you have any questions or comments?
Absolutely. Christine, thank you very much for applying and for moving to Easton. I just want to follow up a little bit on what the, the chair just said about balancing out the perspective on, on the Conservation Commission. Wondering how you would look at the need for economic development and the need for conservation, and how you can marry and meet both, both those needs as a member of this committee?
Yes, I saw that you have this, this major development project. I think it's, is it 524 Depot Street? And that is essentially going into a lot of wild area. And yet, on the other hand, that quasi-wild area is also kind of already encircled by development. So, you know, as far as feeling that you're going into a pristine area and destroying everything, that's not necessarily true. It's already, you know, been encircled. So I think, you know, definitely there are, are ways to be able to design this, to permit in certain ways so that you, you maintain the beauty, you know. This is such a beautiful natural area that you can maintain that beauty while people are still living amongst the trees, if you will. It's definitely possible. In my town of Winchester, for 20 years, I, I was a, a member of something called the Winton Club, which supported Winchester Hospital. But it was a really major organization for town development. And one thing that Winchester did, which Lexington did not do, right next door to Lexington. Lexington, by its permitting, allowed people to build right to the edges of their properties, and they started putting up these McMansions that then completely filled the property. They also didn't have as strict signage requirements as we had in Winchester. So just with some of the, the permitting and allowing things to go a certain way, you had a very different look in the towns. And, you know, Winchester remained of, of one of the, it's a tree city and very attractive. Whereas Lexington started to lose that and started feeling very boxed in. So I definitely think, you know, through appropriate management during the planning, you, you can go quite far with development of an area and still have it look very beautiful and not hurt the, the wildlife. There will be places for wildlife to go, for trees to grow, and so on.
Thank you, Christine. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mark?
Hey Christine, how are you?
Hi.
Excellent. Well, thank you for applying. You know, in, in, Dottie and Craig, they both, they both brought it up. They both mentioned it. And it's something that we're all, we all think about every day here in Easton. And, you know, we have a very difficult balancing act ahead of us. Right now, we're in kind of a, we're trying to support an economic boom in, in a bunch of areas in town. So if you have an economic boom that wrestles with what is, whatever is existing already, right? So you have, and in Easton, we take very seriously our protected lands. We take very seriously our open space. In fact, it's paramount in what we do. We have more preserved open land than you can imagine. I'm sure you've discovered that. But we also absolutely do need economic development in order to keep that. You know, that comes at a, at a great cost. So economic development is not, as far as I'm concerned, it's not an option. We have to do it to, in order to sustain, not even grow. So my question to you is, do you see anything as it pertains to Easton and the Conservation Commission that you would like improved or changed?
I think improved, hmm, I'm, I'm happy as a clam, I gotta say. So I don't think improvement. Oh, well, maybe national grid, excuse me, losing the power for four days. That wasn't a very happy thing. Yeah, and, and they did. They took a step, you know, of, of getting the supply from somewhere else, and I'm going like, yay, get those, those prices down. But at any rate, improvements as far as what's here socially, I'm happy. But looking at where the future is, like for our children who are graduating, are they going to be able to live here in the future and make a living? The society is changing. And if one depended upon building all the time for building new houses as economic development, very often, A, they're, they're gonna get their contractors from elsewhere anyway. And then B, they're done in two, three years with an economic development, with a, a realty development. But something that we can build on is the fact that it happened during COVID, and it may never retain, return back to baseline, is the idea that people are now working remotely. They're working from home, that their home is very often going to be their workplace. And there are, there's such a future for people who are doing. My son outside of Washington DC does, I think they call it CMG, something about consumer management with computers and everything. And he rarely leaves his home anymore. And his wife is a, a political staffer in Washington, and she is very often living from home. So with people now with this lifestyle changing, I think we want to, you know, look at that, that a lot of people will move here who are, they're, they're often just in their home a lot of the time. And having enough around them to go out and do, you know, recreational areas are important to develop, is that, you know, sometimes they're just gonna want to get out and jog. There aren't a lot of places I see, other than on the roads, for people to be able to do the, the kind of thing that a lot of these, I don't know what to call them. It, it's not white collar anymore. It's, you know, people who are very often on their computer for many hours a, a day and supporting that with a very nice environment. I think this is going to be a new type of society that we're facing. And we should look at, at the opportunities, you know, what would they want in their neighborhoods to, to make it happy? Another thing that is happening is, of course, and I'm, I'm certainly as part of that generation, is fewer children, the need for fewer schools. My family on, in Long Island, New York, where we had 12 grammar schools in my town when I grew up, now there are only two. So this is the way the population has changed. The population actually grew. And yet, the people who are living there very often aren't having as many children. So this is another thing that we can be looking at, is the people who will be moving here. You know, are they going to need the things that we saw in the 1950s, the 1980s? You know, is this going to be a, a different kind of society? And I, I do think it is. But I, I can't really tell you very much because I am very happy with the town.
That's plenty. That's, that's good. Thank you.
Jamie?
Christine, thank you. And I know the economic development piece is very important to all of us from, you know, tax base, and you're right, this balancing act, because we've, we've seen it. We've, we've done a good job at working towards more affordable housing in the town, and it doesn't mean that our school enrollment has really increased. I think you're, you're hitting part of that. And it is that, how do we continue to balance? We do want to bring more industry. I'm in industry, but not in Easton. I'm in Attleboro, and it's, it's finding that balance. And so I don't think there's much more you need to speak to it, other than we know that this is gonna continue to be a, a give and take and an understanding that, you know, we need to value land use and not stop progress to, to help our, you know, our tax base here in Easton too, to help offset costs for all of us, especially if we want to be able to create housing that is affordable for not just families, but then as, as we age out of our existing homes with children, and we want to be able to downsize and having those opportunities too. So there is a lot there. It's a, I think this town, there is a lot to learn. And we're asking a lot for anyone that's new to, to the town to, to, to learn all this so quickly. But thank you for throwing your hat in the ring.
Thanks, Jamie. I did want to say that I, I, I worked for Boston Scientific for about 15 years. And they first moved, you know, they had been a real suburb of Boston that was, you know, just outside the city. And then they moved to Natick and were there for about 15 years. And after that, they moved further out, past Framingham. So they, they kept moving there, which is an international company. It's huge. They've got many, many employees. And I think, you know, being able to attract some of this industry, which is very clean, they, you know, have a, a lot of employees, that there will be more industries that want to move their headquarters out of Boston. Boston traffic now is awful, you know. Nobody wants to work there anymore. It's just horrendous. And it, it's getting so bad near the Boston metro area, I can see industries possibly moving here. And to make a play for the first one, like some biotech company that's growing very quickly, to have them come here. They wanted their families, you know, the, the families of the workers wanted a nicer place to live than right outside Cambridge, you know. Having lived in Cambridge, believe me, there's, there's plenty of places there that would just love to get out. And I think this is a huge opportunity, is, you know, just a few very well-placed industries. And I worked in the biotech industry, so I'm, I'm pushing the biotech. But I do think that you, you have a lot of opportunities for people who want to come to a beautiful place that is so well-managed.
Thanks, Christine. Jen, do you have any comments?
Just a super, super quick question, and my, mine is more in the vein of, of how you tie the role of the Conservation Commission to broader environmental issues. You know, when you think of the Commission's work, a lot of the charters framed them all the local as a state. You know, it's put forth by the state, but how do you tie that to, you know, issues around climate change or other broader environmental issues?
Yeah, it's interesting, because when I saw all again, certainly, you know, you can't have one commission with its plate much too full. And you have so many wetland issues here that, that, that's a lot to do right on its own. But beyond that, let's, let's say, do we get into wind energy? You know, what do we do about all the climate change and everything that is happening? The Conservation Commission, the best thing that it can do is to try and hold the line, to try and prevent any further damage of what's going on. But I can see already, one of the members of the Conservation Commission is right after my heart. You know, she is also a master gardener, as I am, and is working on people replacing their lawns with something that's not so environmentally destructive. And that is her, her personal thing to do. As far as whether or not it should be a policy for the town, you know, certainly we can adopt policies where and, you know, using native trees, I certainly hope you have a, a bylaw about that so that Norway maples aren't put up everywhere. That is something that Cambridge is now suffering from. I, I think on a, a larger scale though, Jennifer, it, it's a matter of you also have the Community Preservation Act where that might be something where they can get into more of the, the grand picture of trying to have proactive measures to, to try and, and be helpful. We are in a desperate, you know, I, I can't lie to you. I, I think it is so desperate what's going on with the climate. I don't know that the population, as we have it on the earth, which looks to top 10 billion within a few short years. I don't know that we can handle all that, you know. I, I just don't know how that can go. But meanwhile, you know, as far as for my grandchildren and for the people around me and for my own life, I feel that there are a lot of things that we can do to make it better right now. And, you know, certainly helping to keep the statutes that Massachusetts already has. Massachusetts is more forward-thinking than many of the states, you know. They're, they're really thinking about the environment and following its laws is a, a good thing, just to, to go with what we've got.
Well, thank you for being here tonight, Christine. We really appreciate hearing from you and getting to know you a little bit better. So we're gonna move you back into the attendees, and we're gonna bring in Nathan Crossman, and we're gonna do that interview. And as I said before, we'll deliberate and we'll vote, and we'll hear our decision at the end.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, Nathan.
Hello, how's it going?
Good, welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Appreciate it. I got, I got a dog back in, and I think I have some kids back in too, so hopefully it can keep this pretty chill. But I try to find the quietest place in the house, so.
Sounds like all of our homes too, so we appreciate that. We like kids and pets. So we have your resume and really just interested from you in why you're interested in, in joining the Conservation Commission? And what skills do you think you can bring forward after hearing what we've said on, on board of what we're looking for? And, you know, the balance that we're trying to achieve, and also what the role of the Conservation Commission is?
Well, you know, I think first and foremost, you know, I have an interest in civics, you know, sort of community involvement. I'm already, you know, I'm the Commissioner of East New Baseball. You know, I do that because, you know, I'm interested in giving back and being part of the community, taking a leadership role, helping when I can. So, you know, being part of the Conservation Committee or, you know, any type of town government committee seems like a great way to get involved, to have a say in the future of the town. So, you know, I think from, in, from a broad perspective, I'm just interested in sort of, you know, you know, kind of having a voice and being part of the voice for the future of the town, you know. Because I'm a Rainham native, but I've lived here for 12 years, you know, we love it here, so definitely want to be involved. In terms of the Conservation Committee, my skills specifically, I mean, you know, I'm an avid gardener. You know, I, you know, I was, I had one of the first plots at the Wheaton Farms Garden. I run a community garden at my, the school, where I'm an associate principal in Brockton. You know, and, you know, like the previous candidate said, you know, it's just very impressive, the amount of open space that Easton has been able to preserve. And I am someone who, you know, uses it, is interested in the history of it. So, you know, I think, I'm a school administrator, and prior to that, I was a sports journalist. I went to Stonewall College. So, you know, I don't have a, I, I don't have a background in that type of work per se, but, you know, I do consider myself an environmentalist. Like I said, you know, I feel like I'm in tune with nature as my role of a, as a gardener. And, you know, I think I'm a, you know, I have leadership skills. And, you know, I think I'm a, you know, I have leadership skills, you know, like I said, I'm a school administrator. I, you know, help run the local youth baseball league. So I have leadership skills. I feel like I can make sound decisions. You know, I just kind of, I know, I'm interested in being involved. You know, I don't know if I'm the right man for the job, but, you know, I wanted to throw my hand in the ring and see if I was.
All right, terrific. Craig?
Nathan, thank you very much for throwing your hat in the ring. Appreciate it. As I asked the previous candidate, I want to talk a little bit about how you balance economic development. I don't want to steal Mark's thunder, but I don't want, how we balance economic development as, with conservation in this town.
Yeah, I mean, as, you know, as a, as someone with three young, you know, eight-year-old, a four-year-old, eight-year-old, eleven-year-old and is planning on being in town for a while, I can see, you know, you know, I see the need for the town to grow, right? Mark is absolutely right. I mean, it's not really like a question of if, if we can support economic growth, it's just like, how are we going to support it in the, in a way that's going, that's going to fit the town's sort of aesthetic, you know? So, you know, I think, you know, I, I think you have to sort of, you know, consider all options, you know? You know, I think, I think the town is growing, so you have to consider amenities that families might want, you know, things like restaurants, coffee shops, things like that. I think you have to, you know, you have to consider affordable housing, you know, I'm a big proponent of that. I mean, I work in an inner city every day, right? So I understand the importance for people to have affordable housing, right? Housing has become, you know, tough for a lot of people. So, and, you know, you know, have to, you have to be open to bigger industries coming in too. But at the same time, I mean, you know, I like, I like Easton's model where, you know, it's been able to, you know, when it's given some ground economically, you know, it's been able to take back a little on the conservation side and just try to maintain those open spaces, you know, that is, you know, it is kind of what makes, you know, having, being from Rainham and being sort of a connoisseur of the South Coast, you know, I know all the towns in and out. I mean, Easton is very unique in that it just has, it has been able to maintain a lot of open spaces, which are, which are, you know, as much a asset to the community as, you know, the popular local restaurant on Main Street or the coffee shop down on 138, right? So, you know, they, they all need to live together harmoniously. We just got to figure out how, you know, but in terms of like either or, I don't think that's, I don't think that's, you know, I feel like that's not an option. I feel like it has to be, you know, economically, we're, you know, we're growing, more people want to live here. Christine's absolutely right, you know, people, you know, people's, you know, people's ideas of what it means to work and live in a certain place, computer changing, right? So you could see even more of an influx or maybe the population stabilizes. But either way, you know, we need to grow. But we need to keep that unique, you know, Easton's uniqueness. And, you know, I guess that's what the Conservation Committee does, right? You wrestle with that every, every meeting, right?
Thank you, Nathan.
Mark?
Hi, Nathan, how are you?
Good.
Excellent. So, you know, everything you just said lines up with what we're trying to do right now. You know, when I, when I was speaking with Christine earlier, it's a delicate balancing act and you cannot have open space, all that stuff that we love in this town, without economic development to support the open space. Because when you have open space, open protected land, you're sacrificing the stream of revenue that would exist if a business existed on that land. So then what do you do? You have to turn to these economic zones and you have to develop them. So, you know, the balancing act is, is, it's hard, but it's the direction we need to go in to sustain. And it sounds to me like you're, you can see that, that's very clear to you, which I appreciate. So my same question to Christine was, do you see anything as it pertains to Easton and the Conservation Commission that you would like improved or changed? There's no right or wrong answer and it could be no answer.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know enough about, you know, what's going to change anything, you know, I, you know, whether this is apropos to anything, you know, in my role as the Commissioner of Easton Youth Baseball, one of my primary jobs is really fundraising, right? We have, you know, all sorts of campaigns, fundraising campaigns. It is my job to sort of seek revenue streams, to try to find that money so we can be a top-notch, you know, youth baseball organization. I mean, this is, it's a non, it's kind of nonprofit run by moms and dads, right? I mean, we don't, you know, we don't make any money. So, you know, we got baseballs to buy and fields to fix. So, you know, I am always, I am always on the lookout and, you know, something I'm, it's not like something I'm want to fix, but I would be curious, you know, as the leader of a local organization, I'm always curious about what funds are available to, you know, local organizations like a baseball, you know, league. So I guess that would, that would kind of tie into that economic development, right? As we're bringing in the economy, you know, what are, you know, what are some things that are available to local organizations, you know, in terms, you know, we got, you know, we, we have the money to free up some of that open space, you know, and free up some of the local amenities too. So, but I mean, that is, that's really like, that has nothing to do with this group per se. I guess if you just wanted my curiosity or something I was interested in, not necessarily changing, just finding more about, that would be it.
Thank you.
Jamie?
I mean, but, hey Nate, thanks for coming out. And I just want to say, watching you balance what you do with the Eastern Youth Baseball League as well as being an outstanding father and and what a lot of people don't know is you donate a lot of your time as well as, you know, you're, you're an umpire. And I think that's how you got to know probably a lot of the communities around the South Coast and not to mention the time you spent traveling as a sports writer. But I've seen you take off your coach's hat and put on your, your umpire gear because an umpire didn't show up and call a game. And I just, so the balancing that you do and, and certainly your devotion to this community, that's all I can, you know, speak to. And I think you'd be an asset if it's not this commission, maybe another committee within the town, you'd be a huge asset. So thanks for coming up.
I, I appreciate it, Jamie. And, you know, that's what my father did. That's what my mom did, right? You know, they, they, they took time out of their busy days, my, you know, they, and they were selfless. So when I had kids and it was time for them to do stuff, I, you know, I didn't, you know, I didn't really think otherwise. I just picked up the glove and started coaching and, you know, and, you know, and I would say what's helped me also is being a educator in an urban district, right? You know, every day, you know, I see the need for leadership, for giving your time, you know, for going above and beyond, you know, and, you know, there is, you know, it is never, there's never enough, right? There's never enough of media going on. I'm happy, go, there is never enough of me to give, you know, especially in the school setting and I'm happy to do it, you know, and then it's just, you know, I love doing it. You know, I love giving my time here in Easton. I love the coaching. I love meeting people. I love getting out there. I love, you know, because we're, you know, my wife's from Hangum, I'm from Rainham. You know, but where, you know, our kids love it here and we're here, we're here to stay. And if we're here to stay, you know, I want to, I want to be part of making it the best town it can be. And this is one way to do it. So thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for the compliment, Jamie. I accept it.
I'll stick with the same question and keep it balanced. So when you look at the charge for the Conservation Commission and you think about what it's doing on a local level, how do you translate that to what it's possibly doing on a bigger scale? Like in terms of climate change or other environmental things that may get you, you know, excited or feel passionate?
Yeah, I think there's probably like, I would be interested as the town goes forward, you know, taking some, I don't think risks or chances is the right word, but, you know, sort of like investing itself more in like this sort of green economy, right? You know, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of growth and green energy, but, you know, green industries, so kind of embracing that. I, you know, I, I do agree, you know, that in terms of our overall climate situation, you know, we need to make some big changes. But as Mark said, you know, this town is growing and we need to be mindful that the economy is sort of driving, you know, what we can do. So, you know, I would say the Conservation Committee ties to the overall climate change situation because we have an opportunity to sort of embrace some green initiatives that could help the town's economy, but also help its, you know, sort of, I don't know, for lack of a better term, like carbon footprint or, you know, how we interact with the environment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Well, Nate, we are going to put you back into the attendees and we're going to talk through and deliberate. So if you are chosen, you'll receive a message from the town clerk about getting sworn in. And we appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, once again, when we have a contested seat, it's really tough when we have two great candidates and really qualified. Whoever is not the one that's chosen, I will reach out and see if they have other interests because we don't like to let passionate volunteer-minded people go. And there's always plenty of opportunities to do things in the community here. So, with that said, do any of the members have any, any thoughts or would somebody like to make a motion?
Are we going to do roll call vote or are we, or is somebody?
Well, someone will make a motion in a second and then we'll do a roll call vote.
I can tell you, you know, Nate seemed to me to see the vision of actually what we're planning with economic development coupled with balancing of our open space. He, you know, I know he's been in town a number of years and has stepped into a leadership role. But I felt that he actually has seen the progress over these years, you know, over the, whatever, three, four, or five years that he's been paying attention. So I did enjoy that he had this shared vision that we're all trying to create.
Great. Craig, you look like you're trying to say-
Well, I just, I, I agree with, with Mark. I, I think that, that, that part of, of my concern always is, and as you know from my questions about the economic development, which, which we need as well as the conservation of our, of our wetlands, et cetera. So I, I'm, I'm more inclined, I'm inclined to, to, to nominate Nathan Crossman for the Conservation Commission. Because I think, as I agree with Mark, that I think he has that perspective of, of both sides of, of how we develop the town, but we also protect the, the open spaces, which we all love.
Terrific. So is that a motion, Craig?
That's a motion, yeah.
Second, Lamb.
So Bodger and Lamb, and this will be a roll call vote?
Bodger Crossman.
Lamb Crossman.
Evans Crossman.
Isi Crossman.
And Fulgenetti Atkinson. So we have four, four votes for Crossman. So he will be the one that will get the appointment. And I will be reaching out to Christine to see what other areas we may be able to use you and have you support us in the future. We thank you both for being here tonight and we really appreciate you being interested in serving the town. So with that, we will go on to the next one for the Swift's Park Steering Committee appointments. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had Ed Hands come in and talk to us about Swift's Park and the historical asset that we're going to be trying to improve there. We decided we were going to put together a steering committee to work on that and we'd be seeking input from the community. The committee will direct the process for building support for designing, advancing, and monitoring development of Swift's Park into a memorial park honoring first responders and victims of the nineteen eighteen influenza pandemic and the COVID-19 pandemic. So we're going to have membership of up to eleven people that are appointed by the Select Board tonight, consisting of one representative member nominated from each of the following boards. Select Board, Recreation Commission, Historical Commission, Community Preservation Commission, Board of Health, Commission on Disabilities, Eastern Fire, Eastern Police, as well as three residents at large. So we do have a slate that is included in the package. And so we will nominate, we will vote on that, but we also need a select person's representative on there. So I was wondering if, who on this committee would be interested in serving on that, on that committee?
I politely decline. I thought I'd just put that out there. There's, there's another committee I'm being appointed to potentially tonight. So just bandwidth.
Sure.
In the spirit of politely declining, I'd like to politely decline. It's a bandwidth issue as well.
I will, I'd be, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to, to serve on that committee. I, I know that as the, as the retiree on the, on the, on the board-
Thank you, Craig. I genuinely mean that, thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
I know you pick up a lot of slack for us and, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. And I also think this is in your neck of the woods. So you probably are pretty familiar with that area and
Yes, I am.
You could bring a lot to, to that committee. So I appreciate you stepping up for that. And you're probably one of the most busy retired people that I know.
It's an understatement.
So the other nominees that we have are Chris Mills to represent the Board of Health, Ed Hands to represent Community Preservation Commission, Meredith Keach to represent the Recreation Commission, Chief Justin Alexander to represent the Eastern Fire Department, and Chief Gary Sullivan slash Deputy Chief Boone to represent the Eastern Police Department. So if one isn't able to, the other would fill in for them. Stephanie Danielson, who's the Director of Planning and Economic Development as an ex officio non-voting member. Now we have Craig. And then we have three residents that have, have volunteered. Arlene Keach, she owns a property right in that, in that same area. Dale Karister, who we all know is somebody who really had taken a leadership role for the people down in the Furnisbrook Village area through all of the growth that we've been having in the past couple of years. And Matt Soldner, who also has a historic interest. So if everybody, if, does anybody have any comments or exceptions to any of the people that are nominated?
My only comment is what an incredible group of people. All of these people are, stand out in the community in every way. So this is really a solid group of people.
All right.
So we're voting as a slate? Is that what we're doing? Daddy, we're running as a slate?
Yep. So if you could make a motion and we'll get a second and then we'll vote it as the slate.
I move that we, we vote this as a slate for the Swift Park Steering Committee.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Bodger and Lamb and Craig?
Bodger Slate.
Lamb Slate.
Evans Slate.
Stacy Slate.
And Fulgenetti Slate. Thank you. And everyone, you will be hearing from the town clerk. So I'm sorry-
Just to jump in for the board's benefit, we did receive two additional nominations, but it was after the agenda was posted. So you will see this one more time on your next agenda for the representative from Historical and a representative from the Commission on Disabilities. So just so you know that.
Okay, terrific. And there was a question in the Q and A from, from Christine about the deliberation and we've passed that. So I just want to acknowledge and I'm sorry I didn't catch that while, while it was in there. The next thing we have up is a presentation from the Age Friendly Community Committee. And we will move-
But I don't see Kathy or Joanne here yet. So if you'd be willing, I know Dave's here. Dave Fields here, number five and six. So we want to skip to that and then come back when they get here.
All right. If you'll keep an eye open for them, that'd be terrific. We'll move David over.
Good evening, David.
Good evening. How are you?
Hi, David.
I'm good.
So we are looking at a contract award for Calgon Carbon Corporation for PFOS pressure vessels. Contract DPW twenty twenty-two dash twelve. You want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. This is part of the overall PFOS treatment plant projects we have going on for wells one, two, and four. Due to the anticipated long lead times for these items, these were pre-procured ahead of the overall project bidding. We opened bids in November and Calgon Corporation, Calgon Carbon Corporation was the lowest apparent bidder with a bid price of one million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and six dollars. And this is for the pressure vessel systems, which the treatment plants will be built around. The actual, the buildings and all the apartment work will be bid separately, but to get, make sure we can get the- The actual buildings and all the apartment work will be bid separately, but to get, make sure we can get these online, these were bid early. So. Our partners are, are engineer and they recommend approval and so do I.
Terrific. Any questions from anyone on the board?
I do have a question. It's kind of a side question. So I know this was purchased. It's being purchased now because of the long lead times. But along with that, which is a benefit, i- is it's being purchased so far in advance because of the long lead times, but also before this inflation is really in full swing. So I would encourage you, Dave, to purchase as much as you can now before things just, and I, I mean that. I don't know what your abilities are or what your limitations are, but purchase as much as you can for this project in advance.
Yep, noted. And we are, we're moving as fast as we can to get everything locked down as soon as we can. But that's a great point, Mark. Thank you.
Terrific. Well, with that, if somebody would like to make a motion to assign, to award this contract to Calgon. In the amount of $1,659,606, this is, this proposed contract amount is going to be funded through the $9.17 million town meeting appropriation. So.
So move Roger.
Second Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb.
Roger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. All right, next. Presentation, hold on a second. Discussion and vote, the Traffic Safety Committee recommendation for installation of stop signs on Massapug Avenue at the intersection of Mill Street.
Yes, thank you. So a- as you may recall, we, we were, we were asked to look at this intersection previously in 2017. At that time, the residents were requesting that the existing stop signs on Mill Street be upgraded to like a flashing LED sign. And at that point, we didn't have, we didn't see any evidence that people were not obeying those stop signs. So we didn't recommend those. But we also noted at the time that there are, you know, a lot of accidents at that intersection and it's primarily due to site distance. So the people on Mill Street. Are pulling out when they shouldn't because they don't really have adequate site distance. We made some recommendations at that time to try to improve the site distance, DPW, remove some trees and vegetation to improve it slightly. But our hope was to be able to get some permission from private property owners to do some additional trimming. That was, didn't come to fruition. So we didn't get that permission. And again, residents asked us to look at this again this past fall. So at that time, we requested OCPC's help, doing a road safety audit. We've worked with them on several road safety audits before. And during the road safety audit, you know, there are many minor modifications that, you know, may, may help impact the intersection in a positive way. But the, the biggest one we found was that we now meet the thresholds for a, a four-way stop. And an always stop is not something we take lightly. If you put an always stop where it shouldn't be, you can actually cause more accidents. So it's a request, stop signs are a frequent request. So we really want to be cautious about, you know, making sure we follow all the guidelines. But due to the amount of accidents at the intersection, it does meet the warrants for an always stop. And so the Traffic Safety Committee, which is the, the two chiefs and myself, met to, to look at this. And we did feel that an always stop was an appropriate here, appropriate step. And so i- if, you know, the board agreed, we would ask for, you know, a vote to amend our rules and regulations to incorporate always stop at this location. And then DPW, we've already designed it, the appropriate intersection head signs. We would do some temporary new, new traffic pattern signs to make people well aware that, especially on Massapug, that there's a stop sign where there wasn't before. Basically, there are LED message boards ahead of this for several months, new traffic pattern signs and placards. And then the actual stop signs themselves. So I'm happy to answer any questions about how we came to this recommendation or any other questions anyone has.
Sure. We'll start with you Craig.
I have, I have no questions. Thank you.
No questions. I fully support your conclusion.
Jamie?
I would just say that I've been with Timothy, but mostly we happen to be campaigning when I know he lives nearby there and had his wife call him and then the fire department call him for. An accident and then listening to him talk about his historical knowledge of that intersection. So I think this is great that the study's been completed. Thank you.
No questions. I agree. I think it's a very smart decision for that particular intersection.
I would just say I did have the opportunity to join that road safety audit and there was a lot of really great thought and questions and, and history and data. Used to make that decision. I know from being on this board for a long time with David, that stop signs are not an easy thing to, to get put for the same reasons that he said earlier. So I know that you don't take that lightly. That is really a dangerous intersection. I think it's so big and there's really no indicators to. To show you where it's coming, especially if you come from different directions, coming from Foxboro to East. And I know several times I've been probably driving a little too fast and it. Kind of sneaks up on you. So I think it will be really helpful to see those stop signs. So with that, I would thank you and OCPC for the work that you did on really evaluating that intersection. And I would take a motion to create an always stop sign at the intersection of Mill Street. By amending the town code of the Eastern Traffic Rules and Regulations, Section 502-62, Article 9, Schedules Number 5. Adding Massapug Ave, East and West at Mill Street.
So move Roger.
Second Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb.
Roger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight, David. Good to see you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay.
As promised, Kathy and Joanne here. Let's keep her in mind.
All right, awesome. So we're going to go back to that, the presentation of the Age Friendly Committee. And we're going to see the Age Friendly Community Action Plan. As we bring them in. Hi Joanne, thanks for being here tonight. Hi Kathy.
Hi there. Sorry about the, I had some technical difficulties a little bit earlier, but I think they're resolved. So.
So tell us a little bit about the age friendly work that you've been doing and.
Sure.
For full disclosure, I am the select board representative on that committee. So I know all the awesome things that have been happening in the past year.
Right. I'm, we're really here on behalf of the Age Friendly Advisory Committee. And we want to present the action plan that has actually been out there for a while now. We want to present that for adoption by the select board. I do have a, a little presentation that I wanted to give you with some of the highlights of the, of the action plan. And I promise there will be plenty of time for questions if you have them. So I think.
Share screen?
I'm going to try to share my screen. Yep. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. All right. So a few things that I wanted to go over with you just to review, and you're probably familiar with a lot of this because you've seen the action plan already. And we've had a public comment timeframe. But I just thought I would review some of it and maybe for some of the people that are watching this at home, they might not have seen some of this before. So the agenda in this presentation is to go over some of the background of the project. Do a short overview of the project itself, talk a little bit about the community needs assessment. And the domains, visions, and goals that were created as a result of the needs assessment for the town. You may all remember this, but this actually started back in 2018 when the select board voted to proclaim Eastern a town committed to promoting, creating, and sustaining community for all ages. We joined the AARP network of age-friendly states and communities and committed to use that guidance from the AARP. To become an age-friendly community. And in 2020, the select board established the Eastern Age Friendly Advisory Committee and set a vision for the town. Which was that our vision is of a town in which the social and physical environments promote the health and well-being of residents of all ages. A little bit of background on what an age-friendly community, what that looks like. This was actually started in 2012 by AARP and they were creating. They were creating a global network really for age-friendly cities and communities. And so far, probably more than 803 now in the United States have joined. And regionally, we, Brockton and Stoughton, our closest neighbors, have also joined this and are working on an action plan. But Eastern is actually the first to develop an action plan in the area. When AARP created this program, they took a look at what community features would impact the well-being of older adults. And help make communities more livable for people of all ages. And they came up with a set of eight, what they call Domains of Livability. Outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, respect and social inclusion, housing, communications and information, civil participation. Community support and health services and social participation. And I wanted that as a, as a baseline to show you what we were looking at. The domains really grounded us in what we were looking at when we went ahead and did our community assessment. But the project here, the, the project flow that we're following is. That the select board first created that resolve and the Age Friendly Advisory Committee. Then we conducted a community needs assessment and solicited public comment. So that has been going on. For about two years, two and a half years now. And from that community needs assessment, we created an action plan based on results. And we did that by. Taking input from residents, AARP also did a review of our action plans. And now we're at the point in the project where we're looking for adoption by the select board to make this a formal. Project that we will work on in the future. So the next steps for that would be to implement and work toward the plan goals that exist. Share solutions and successes and good practices and assess the impact and report progress and then repeat. Talk a little bit about the community needs assessment. That was a review. First, we did a review of the age-friendly assets that are already in Eastern. It created a community profile of demographic information. And then to actually gather the information, there were a couple of different efforts to gather this. There were three research projects with Boston University students and that went through fall of 2019 through the fall of 2020. And those students did interviews and surveys with people in Eastern and focus groups with residents in Eastern. When the Age Friendly Advisory Committee was created, we decided that we would, in addition to what was already done. We thought we would broaden that, that public. Information gathering and we did another survey. That was a little broader and we doubled, we about doubled the number of people that responded to that survey. So we felt like we had even more information on which to draw from, to make an assessment of the community. So, and then after the survey was done, November through December of 2021, we did virtual public listening sessions. And we had a public comment compilation period. And I should say, one of the things that I want to make sure that I call out is. Joanne Ziegler's participation in all of this. Joanne is our, she's actually the lead author on this action plan. She's the Senior Economic Development and Environmental Planner with Old Colony Planning Council. And Joanne, especially over this time period with trying to do this during COVID and all the changes and things that needed to be done. And adjustments that needed to be made to even get through this project. Joanne was really instrumental in helping us do that. When we were doing the community needs assessment, we drew information from a lot of different places. We looked at census data. That really showed us, kind of supported what we thought was true. And that is that the, the population, the age of the population. In the United States and actually in Eastern, when we looked specifically at Eastern data, the population of those people aged 65 and older is increasing. Substantially and will continue to increase within the next few years. When we did our 2021 community survey. Very nice thing that we found was that 75% of our respondents rated Eastern as good, very good, or excellent place for people to live as they age. There's a large, if you look at this, you see 42%, 43% or so in the middle. And the tails on either end of this good section are very good and excellent or poor to fair. And they're, they're nearly the same in those two categories. So it, while we really. People do think that Eastern is a good place to be to age, we have some work to do. And that's the point of this project. The summary of the community survey, when we were looking at the domains that we were going to focus on. And I should also say that some towns are looking to do all eight of those domains from the AARP. But they can do that if, if you have an extended period of time in which to do this project, if you have two years or more. To really dig in, you probably could do all eight. But we really were trying to limit at least our initial work. To what we thought we really was realistic that we could do. So we took a look at those eight domains of livability and we asked people on our survey. To rank those eight domains in order of importance. So we asked people, which do you think the most work are, for the following, for those eight categories, which do you think need the most work to make Eastern a place where you can remain as you age? And if you look at this diagram, you can see that the top, the top three are housing, transportation, community health and services, and communication are, are nearly equal. So what we did was we took a look at those results and we've decided to focus on three areas for Eastern's action plan. So we're, we chose housing, transportation, and communication and information. And communication and information, we picked ahead of the other. Domain that was right beneath it because we thought communication and information was actually one domain that would underpin any other domain that we did. So every domain that we decide to focus on will have a communications and information component to it. So housing, our vision for housing. Is a town where diverse housing options are available and residents can age in place, remaining independent in their homes as long as possible. We have goals and we also have strategies, which you, you probably know already because you've seen the action plan. But for each of these domains that we chose to focus on, we created goals. We created goals and we created strategies for. Or suggestions for how to reach those goals. So housing was the first one that we looked at. And we heard a lot from people even in public comments, I'll show you. Summary slide later about public comment, but. Housing was a big one, people want to be able to stay in their homes. As they age and they, and or they would like to be able to move to a home. That's a more livable situation for them, but still stay in Easton. So those are a couple of things that people struggle with right now. Transportation, this is another one, our vision for this. Is of a town where enough safe, affordable and accessible transportation options exist within the community. That older residents may go where they need and want to go in Easton or surrounding areas. So we had three goals that were associated with transportation. All around meeting the needs of older residents. To, so that they can maintain a quality of life and not. Feel isolated because they can't get around in town or out of town. And we want to make sure that the structural integrity of the town is also age-friendly for pedestrians and. And. People that just. That walking is safe and pleasant around town. The domain for communications and information. Vision for this is that. Of a town where age-friendly information is communicated regularly in an accessible and user-friendly way. Effectively reaching residents of all ages and abilities, so we have three goals around that. We want to make sure that the communication practices that we have reached the residents. We want to make sure that those initiatives are related resources and available for everyone. And we want to make sure. That regardless of age or ability, residents are engaged and as active in the community as they want to be. And again, these are, these are the goals for these through three domains, but the strategies affiliated with these, each of these goals are in. The action plan itself. Just a couple of public comment highlights that we got, is this, we got these comments. After the December cutoff for public comment. They were good, we had a, we didn't get many of them, but the ones that we did get really kind of reinforced. What we had been seeing when we did the survey work. One around the housing goal was that, and I'll just highlight a couple of things in these. In these comments, but. The first one around housing is that we had a comment that I just want to live in my town. So people want to be able to remain in their town, even if they can't remain in the same home that they had been living in. Another one that we have around. The strategies around housing also. Is that. People's ability to get out and about is, is critical and this. It's important for us to have, and this is actually transportation related. It's important to have alternate transportation, we talked a lot to. We talked a lot about the fact that it's. We do have some transportation within Easton, especially associated with council on aging. But we have difficulty if people want to get in or out of Easton using public transportation. We don't really have that in Easton and that may be something that we might want to look at in the future. The other thing we found in looking at these comments is that some of these comments are related to the fact that. People might not know what's already available around some of these issues for these three domains. And so. That communication piece is going to be really important to sort of tease apart what is really still an issue and what, what. Do we already have in place that addresses some of the issues that we have? And again, there are updates in the action plan. For each one of these domains, at the end of each chapter for, for each of these domains. There is a section called progress to date, so that gives people when. Hopefully when this is adopted and we start working on it, when people start to. Figure out how the strategies and the goals can actually be. Can have progress made on them, they'll be able to look at the progress to date and include that in. Solutions to some of these issues that we have. Eastern zoning allows accessory dwellings, but the dwellings, what we found was that the dwellings have to be attached. And they're restricted to family members. Which precludes the ability for a full-time aide who's not a family member, so that was kind of a, that was kind of eye-opening. I'm not really sure a lot of people knew about that, also there were. The zoning code allows owner long-term rental of up to three bedrooms of their home by right. And that was another one that we weren't sure that people knew about, so some of these. Some of these existing solutions just really need to be communicated. We also look to work with the disability commission. They gave us some input. Especially around website accessibility and how the town might become eligible to apply for grants if. A, a regular. Review using the website accessibility checklist from the New England ADA Center was used. In planning and updating websites. And also, we talked about encouraging. Are the best way or how to encourage universal design when development. Is being carried through in the town. Many of these are big discussions that have to happen and we don't have absolute solutions to these yet. But that is the next piece of the process here for this project. Our next steps then would be now that we have an action plan with goals and strategies. We wanted to, and we have the, we've gone through a pretty extensive assessment and public comment. Phase, we wanted to present this action plan to the select board for adoption. The next step after that would be to implement the plan and report the progress to the ARP. And then let the AFAC, the age-friendly advisory committee. Help to implement the actions, monitor the progress and develop further action plans to address additional domains. So we. And thinking through this, when we decided that we were only going to be able to do probably three domains in a short term. For a short-term plan, we did check in with the ARP who told us that. They did look at the plan too and, and thought that the plan was really good. And said there was no problem if we wanted to continue this project and add domains as we were able. So that was good to hear. And. I have a, a slide here just for more information, we obviously want. Anyone who wants to participate in the programs and activities or, or in this effort around making. East and age-friendly, we want to make sure that people know how to find information and. And be able to participate if they can and want to, so they can look at the Easton Town website. Contact select board representatives or town staff at the council on aging. And if we, if anyone would like to get the age-friendly Eastern action plan. In an alternative format, if they want one printed, they can please call Anne Daly. The deputy director of health and human services for the town. And she's at the council on aging, and if anyone else has comments or questions after this. Presentation, you can contact me at the email noted below. And last but not least, I wanted to put this in, you know, for the record, the big thank you, I thank Joanne. And have to thank the. The advisory committee who's been great, we've been meeting. We started out meeting monthly, we, we then were meeting every two weeks as. During the public comment and shortly before that, we were meeting almost weekly to try to get this done for the town. I'd also like to thank Kristin Kennedy, our director of health and humanity, human, sorry, health and community services. For initiating the effort to become age-friendly in the first place, so thank you very much for that. And now I will, sorry, I kind of went through that pretty quickly because I know you've heard a lot of this already, but I thought I would. Just try to review all of that and then open up for questions.
Thank you Kathy, if you could unshare your screen so that I could see everybody. We can have some discussion. Before we do that, I just wanted to see Joanne, do you have any comments or thoughts on, on this or the process or the results?
Hi everyone, good evening, I'm Joanne Ziegler from Old Colony Planning Council, I just want to say that. The committee that the town of Easton formed for this project is really quite extraordinary, so you guys should be super proud of the volunteers that you've got in your town. They were actively engaged throughout the process, did exactly what a committee should do on a project like this. Kathy is a super wonderful chair of the whole initiative and it was a real pleasure to work. Both with town staff as well as with the committee on this. Easton is the first community in the Old Colony region to have an action plan, so that's something to definitely be proud of, there are a lot of. Other communities in the region who are now going to be looking at you guys to see how they can do it and. And adapt it to their communities. And I think, you know, Kathy gave a really great summary presentation of what it's all about and the next steps really are to. Start working on the implementation of that plan and the committees already started talking about how to, you know, start looking at those additional domains as well too. So you guys have an awesome foundation and I'm really looking forward to watching progress.
Thanks Joanne. So we'll take comments from the board, starting with you Craig.
First of all, I want to say hello to Kathy once, once again and thank her for her investment in our community. I don't know if people know it, but she's been doing this kind of work. In Easton for quite a long time and, and I really appreciate that Kathy, I thought that the. That the, the, the plan, the, the work that you guys did developing. The plan was, was quite extraordinary and I think that the. The plan is very comprehensive, it's very thoughtful. There are some significant challenges, when, when you talk to folks in town about, about affordable housing. I know a lot of folks. Who want to, want to downsize and it's, it's very difficult to do that in, in Easton unfortunately. And so I think that's a, that's a real challenge in transportation. My kids used to complain years ago, but there's no way to get around town except mom and dad, so. I think that's a, that's still an issue that, that needs to be addressed, although the council on aging does a great job. With folks, if they're aware of the, of the, of the service that is, that is available for the council on aging. But I'm, I'm very impressed, I read this tonight, this afternoon a couple of times. And we, we have your work cut out for you, but I think it's a great start and, and I'm really pleased. Kathy, that you stepped up to take this on.
Thanks Craig. Mark.
Hey everybody, so that was an incredible presentation, I'm very happy that I, I reviewed it. I, I looked at all seventy of those pages that you, that was in, in the, the, the presentation that I, I looked at last week. There's a lot of information, stuff that you don't even think about to explore, and one of the things I want to point out is. Kind of like, if you recall the, the audit that was done a few years ago, it's a document that you get to use for the next decade. It's not like you guys poured into this, you know, so much work that we look at it and say, okay, you know, thank you for that, let's go move forward from that. We're going to look, constantly be looking back to this document as a resource for, like, for at least the next decade. To, to pull information from, to implement, so it was thoroughly impressive, it was not what I was expecting. Not that I had a low bar, but it was, it went above and beyond my expectations.
Thanks Mark, I, I'll just interject here that, you know, there's so much going on in this town all the time and, and so many. Active and engaged committees and it's hard for the public to know everything that's happening and even for the board, so. Mark reached out to me a couple of months ago with, with ideas, you know, we're all very concerned about the affordability and the livability of the people in the community and. Mark came, you know, to me with a great idea and I said, yeah, we're talking about that in the age-friendly community, so make sure you read this because. He had a bunch of great ideas that were already being worked on by this committee and ties in with so many areas, not just housing, but economic development for sure. Transportation and the livability feature, so I'm glad that you enjoyed that, Mark, and, and I'm sure you saw a few things in there that you. That resonated strongly with you.
Absolutely did.
Jamie.
Kathy, I want to thank you too because reading through the surveys. As well as the work that the U students did and the. You know, feedback that, that was received, it is, it is a great document that. Mark mentioned will be historical one that we can revert to, but your presentation tonight did such a good job of. Laying a, a very thoughtful path forward because you can take all that information too and be very overwhelmed. By the amount of information in there and certainly the, the second survey and what it touched on was extraordinary, so. Thanks for bringing the focus and then, and then sharing that with the, with the public, thank you.
Thanks Jamie, yeah.
Hey, thank you so much Kathy, that was fantastic. I will just concur with the rest of the group that the, the plan is just so thorough, it really an incredible document to read through. And the framework makes it really simple to digest and understand and see all the different opportunities there are and. It's very timely, this is an issue that needs to be tackled now and I'm really, it's, it's a, it's a strong showing that Easton is ahead of the pack on. Looking at this and thinking about how to address the challenges that lie ahead for our residents who want to age in place. And I will also add that I think strongly that the housing, transportation and communications buckets are a very solid choice for, for. Biggest bang for buck and opportunity for having the biggest impact on bettering our community for our residents who. This will serve, so thank you for being very thoughtful for giving the charge in this, this is just, this is awesome, thank you.
So, and I'll just wrap it up by saying that, you know, if we're all lucky enough to get older. I'm glad that we're looking out for people of all ages as, as they're moving through the life continuum here. Hopefully we're all gonna get to be older, but we all have older people in our lives that we love, whether it's. People in our immediate family or, or loved ones around us and, you know. I'm really proud of this select board for taking this up as an issue because we really are putting our money where our mouth is that we do care. About our older people in Easton and we want to make it so that they can stay here as they age. I want to comment on something about the public outreach, when Kathy mentioned that there were three opportunities for outreach. Two of them took place before COVID or kind of like at the very initial stages of that. And when we convened and talked about that, COVID really brought some things to the forefront that we really hadn't explored much before that. In the outreach and, you know, one of them is an example is, there's a lot of people that don't have computers in our community. And so how did we get to the outreach with them? There's a lot of diversity in our communities and did we really reach every avenue of that? Ernest Smith is on this committee, he's a veteran and so he took the initiative to get these surveys to all the veterans. The people that didn't have, you know, opportunities to respond electronically, we printed up copies of this and we had them at. Town hall, the library, the council on aging. a number of different places, at Avalon, at Shovel Works. We really wanted to try to reach out, not just to people that live here in homes, but people that are renting. So the committee really, really took a tremendous amount of thought and time and effort to make sure that we were reaching as many people as possible, because, you know, sometimes on these surveys, you really just kind of hear from the same old people. And so I think it was really great that the committee thought to do that. And I'd really encourage everybody to read this. If you're watching at home, you know, like the group said, it's a very good read, it's very well-defined and organized. And Kathy, you know, you were the person, one of the chairs of the Master Plan Committee, so you had a really kind of a good idea about how this process would work. I know you were trying to retire, and I appreciate you letting me lure you back in to chair this committee with this really great topic. And also want to thank the other committee members, who are just really such incredible contributors. Kim Bales, Ernest Smith, Ron Penney-Marthy, Susan Kelly and Jean Perrinello. Jean and Ernie and Susan Kelly are all on the attendees here listening. So that just demonstrates their commitment to be here to watch the presentation. And then finally,
Anne Daly. Forgot Anne Daly.
And Michael.
And Michael, right.
Really put a lot of effort into it as well. Michael was there from the very beginning, and so was Anne. And then Joanne, just a rock star. I mean, really, I can't say enough about how Joanne came prepared to every meeting. I don't know that she was expecting to do as many meetings as we had. It was supposed to really just be a once-a-month thing, but it was so much work. And we really, we really appreciate all that extra effort and guidance and lived experience. Joanne brought a lot of knowledge from her environment and the people that she loves that are older and aging. So Kathy, did you want to have any comments concluding?
Just, you know, just thanks again. Thanks. And honestly, you know, thanks for the opportunity to be able to do this. I mean, it's, it is work, and you have to find volunteers to do the work and that. But honestly, living in this town and being able to do this kind of work is, you know, makes you proud to be here.
So you'll still take my calls?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, thank you, you know, everybody for taking a look at this. And so we need a vote to accept this age-friendly action plan, and that will move it forward to, back to AARP to approve and accept, and then we'll start tackling some of these action items. So if somebody would like to make a motion to accept the age-friendly action plan?
Absolutely. Barger, yes.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Genetti, yes. So thanks so much, everyone, for being here tonight for that, Kathy, Joanne and
Thank you.
committee members.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks.
Okay, next, we have a presentation by the Director of Planning and Economic Development regarding the Department of Housing and Community Development Draft Guidelines for Multifamily Zoning Districts from MBTA Communities.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. As Duddy mentioned, I'm Stephanie Danielson, the Director of Planning and Economic Development for the town. And tonight, I'm here to brief the Select Board on a new requirement that the town is facing, its multifamily zoning requirements for MBTA communities. So what I'm going to talk about is the legal framework behind the MBTA community multifamily zoning requirement. And we're going to talk about what the requirements are for MBTA communities and the multifamily districts, and also the impact of non-compliance with this new requirement. We are going to talk about the draft guidelines that were promulgated by the Department of Housing and Community Development and how the town can provide comments and the timeframe for that. And then I'm going to talk about the steps necessary to ensure ongoing compliance with the new requirement. So the Acts of 2020, or the Economic Development Bond Bill, also sometimes referred to as the Housing Choice Initiative, was signed into law by Governor Baker in January of 2021. This legislation included an amendment to Chapter 48. 48 is often referred to as the Zoning Act. A new section was actually added to 48, Section 3A, that requires each MBTA community to establish at least one by right multifamily zoning district that meets certain requirements that are set forth in the amendment. The amendment also included a penalty. Any MBTA community that does not comply with the requirements will not be eligible for certain state funding. So by statute, Easton is an MBTA community. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute and what that means. But I think it's important to understand the impetus behind this multifamily zoning district requirement. It comes from the fact that housing production in Massachusetts since 1980, after a high peak of production, has dropped dramatically. While housing production has remained relatively low since the 1980s, the cost of housing has soared. And you can see from the slide in the graph in the middle here that since around 1995, housing just skyrocketed. It leveled out a little bit, and it's back on the rise. And I think we're all aware of stories about people trying to buy homes and the cost of homes. And in particular, multifamily housing has dropped, the production of multifamily housing. Another driving factor is the fact that new housing development is not helping to reach the goals for location of housing, in particular multifamily, within proximity of public transit. That were, these goals were established both by the current and the previous state administrations. So after signing the bill into law, Governor Baker charged the Department of Housing and Community Development with developing the guidelines that define what compliance with the new section of the zoning law means. And those guidelines were issued from the Department of Housing and Community Development around mid-December. And right now, we're in a comment period that ends the end of March. And again, I just want to state, by statute, Easton is an MBTA community. So some of the Select Board probably are asking, I'm sure any members of the public who are watching tonight, want to know what is an MBT community? And if Easton doesn't have any MBTA services located in town, why is Easton affected by this requirement? Well, in total, there are 175 communities that are either identified in MGL Chapter 161A, Section 1 or Section 6, as an MBTA community. And they comprise 65 municipalities either that are hosting the MBTA services within the community boundaries, or another 110 communities that abut municipalities that host MBTA services. So in Easton, Easton has Stoughton to the north that has MBTA service through commuter rail, and also Brockton to the east, which has commuter rail service as well as bus service. The bus service is very limited in coming into Easton. It serves the industrial park and Stonehill College, but we have no stations. And while I'll go into the specifics of the requirements for these districts in a moment, I do want to mention that Easton, under the definition of the guidelines, so we're an MBTA community by statute. But under the guidelines, they've classified MBTA communities as those communities that actually have MBTA services located within their bounds or within a half mile of the municipal boundaries. All the other communities that are identified as MBTA communities by statute are defined as adjacent communities, MBTA-adjacent communities. And what that means is that where the statute requires, if you're an MBTA community, you must have your multifamily zoning district located within a half mile of an MBTA station. The guidelines for MBTA-adjacent communities are that the district should be established in areas consistent with sustainable development principles. And those principles are generally that the area has mixed use, is located, locates neighborhoods near services, there are sidewalks for people to walk and bicycle lanes. So where a town would have that type of a district, that's where you want to see your MBTA multifamily district developed. So what are the requirements for this district? At a minimum, the district has to be 50 acres in size. It can be broken up. You can have overlay districts, but at least one of those areas comprising the overlay district have to have 25 acres of contiguous land. And no section can be less than five acres in size. The district has to be suitable for families. The district needs to support a density minimum of 15 units per acre, and that's across the district. And it has to be by right, which means that legally and practically that this zoning, this density level has to be allowed. An additional stipulation they've added to the guidelines is that the total number of units that can be anticipated to be built within the district and reasonably built within the district has to equal 10% of the total housing stock as of the 2020 census for the town. So in Easton, that number is 913 units. As of 2020, Easton's housing stock is at 9,130 units. And then, again, preferably within an area consistent with the sustainable development principles. What the zoning district cannot do is restrict unit size, number or size of bedrooms, number of occupants, or the age of occupants. So remember, one of the things, one of the requirements is that the district has to be suitable for families. And these restrictions, disallowed restrictions, reflect that goal. The fact that the district really needs to support multifamily zoning at the prescribed density level by right is by right, and again, has to be reasonably allowable. It doesn't mean that the town has no overview. It can be subjected, any development proposed in the district can be subjected to site plan review. But that site plan review is limited to access to the site, vehicular access and circulation, making sure that vehicles can enter the district safely, operate safely, that it's safe for pedestrians walking in the area. That's how I interpret that. Architectural building design. So that gives the town some ability to ensure that the design of the development is consistent with the adjacent development within the district and the community at large. And then ensuring that there's a screening of adjacent properties as appropriate. The zoning district can include, I think some people maybe are already thinking about this, there can be an affordability requirement. It can be located within mixed residential-commercial areas. But again, the ability to construct the residential units still has to be at the 15 units per acre minimum, and you still have to be able to achieve or be able to allow for the 913 units across the district. You can also incorporate already-built multifamily areas into your district. But again, you need to still have that 25 contiguous acres, and any overlay district cannot be smaller than five acres. The zoning is intended to provide the ability to develop to those, that level of density and the multifamily units, but it's not a requirement to build. So once a town adopts their zoning, the town doesn't have to go out and find developers to build to that level. It just has to be available, and it has to be practicable and feasible for a developer to come in and develop within the district. So I talked about the fact that right now, DHCD has issued the guidelines, and we're in a comment period. The deadline for submitting comments is March 31st. Then, staying in compliance, when the governor wrote, adopted, or I'm sorry, signed the bill into law, they, working with the Department of Housing and Community Development, it was determined that all towns would be in compliance with the regulation through the period of drafting the guidelines. In order to stay compliant through May 2nd of 2022, there is a form, there are some steps that the town needs to take, and it's pretty straightforward for Easton. The first one, let's see, the requirements require that we do this briefing to the Select Board. And then there's a simple form that needs to be filled out. Basically, they're just looking for information on where the town stands with multifamily zoning today, as of right. There's no penalty for the answers. I think they expect a lot of communities are going to say, in fact, most, that they don't really have any by right zoning. And then the town needs to ensure that they have provided the state with the most recent assessor's parcel layer in a GIS format, which Easton does on a regular basis, provides an updated GIS layer. By July 1st of 2023, one of the steps that the town needs to take is to develop an action plan on how it is going to move forward in developing and then adopting the zoning. And that plan needs to be approved by DHCD by July 1st, 2023. The deadline for adopting the zoning is December 31st, 2024. And once you have adopted your zoning, a town's adopted your zoning, you have 90 days to request a determination of complete compliance with DHCD. So the next steps, as outlined in the packet that you received earlier, we're making a recommendation that the Select Board appoint a task force that's charged with initiating the process for developing the district within the town. that's charged with initiating the process for developing the district within the town. Um, the steps that we've outlined are reviewing, understanding, and discussing the draft guidelines as they apply to Easton. This actually serves two purposes. It starts to um, it, it ensures that everyone understands what the guidelines are. It also will kind of uh bubble up the comments that the town will want to provide to DHCD um regarding the guidelines. And it also starts the process of thinking about where the um where the districts should um exist or could exist. Um, it, and that's part of the task force charge too, is considering and commenting on areas most likely suited to comprise the overlay district. That includes identifying some of the development constraints. Um, for example, what is the capacity to treat wastewater? There might be areas where the um land exists, but there's no set uh sewer, um, only a few areas of town have sewer at this point in time and are expected to for a while. So how, how can you develop out in the area? What are the other physical constraints such as wetlands, et cetera? Then draft the, based on this activity, draft the comments on the guidelines to present to the select board for some little to DHCD and determine and recommend most likely suitable locations of the required by right district. One of the steps that I is not included on the charge I've added here is um, I think it would make sense for the task force to draft the action plan for submittal to the Department of Housing and Community Development. The prescribed composition of the task force is the chairs and um staff representing the select board, planning board, Affordable Housing Trust, Conservation Commission, Economic Development Council, Finance Committee, School Committee, Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, the Planning and Economic Development Director, School Superintendent, and Fire Department. Um, I think the composition is pretty self-explanatory. These are the boards that are most involved with land use in town and economic development and financial interests of the town as well as the various departments. And I've sketched out a rough timeline for the task force to operate under, um, which is that it would convene its first meetings in early February, have working meetings through the month of February, probably early March, compile the draft comments, which should be submitted to or reviewed with the select board around the middle of March with final comments um to the select board on the twenty-eighth in time for submittal on the twenty-ninth. And with that, I will entertain questions. Comments?
Stephanie, can you unshare so we can see?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So thank you for that very detailed presentation. It's, it's a lot. It's a lot of information coming at us at once. And uh, I think it takes a little bit to digest it. So um Craig, you're up first.
I'm a, I'm a little overwhelmed by the uh, by the, by the information that Stephanie has provided, as well as the documents that we've had an opportunity to review. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused about we're con- we're, we're considered a, an MBTA community, but not in, but since we don't have any access to MBA services, are we considered something slightly different?
So that's, is that what you said? Yes, we're considered for, under the guidelines. So remember, you have the statute that defines Easton as well as one hundred and seventy-five other communities, one hundred and ten of which don't have MBTA services located within their uh municipal bounds. Um, so you have that statute that's been in existence for a while, quite a while. And then you have the guidelines. So even though under the statute, we're identified as an MBTA community, under the guidelines, Easton, because it doesn't have an MBTA service located within the boundaries of the town or within a half mile of any of the boundaries in the town, it's considered a um, an MBTA adjacent community. So the town still needs to um adopt a by right multifamily zoning district. It doesn't have to be located a half mile from an MBTA station, because it can't be. And, and many of those adjacent communities are also MBTA uh um adjacent communities.
So this isn't a surprise. So I will say something that probably most people don't know, and I didn't really know it until I became the chair, is that um, Easton pays an assessment every year to the MBTA. And this has been probably a little bit more than ten years when they designated these adjacent communities, because you know, they're trying to spread the, the, the communities that have the commuter rail or the bus um or subway service in different parts of the city. The burden of that transportation system is really hard for a limited amount of communities to bear. So they took the communities that were in the middle that benefit from it also to share some of the expense of that. So we do get an assessment every year of that. And then um, the chair of each community sits in on the MBT, is an MB, on the MBTA Advisory Committee. And I've gone to a lot of those meetings where they talk about um, you know, all of the transportation issues and so forth. So it's something that, it's not something new. It's just something that we've really never talked about, because it hasn't had much of an impact to Easton.
One, one other question for Stephanie, uh, if I may, um, we, we, you talked about wastewater treatment, et cetera. So that, that, does it, does the district have to be within uh one of our sewer districts or, or, or not?
No, and the guidelines don't talk to that. It, what it talks to is that the district has to be um reasonably able to accommodate the density. So of course, where you don't have sewer, you're going to have to have on-site septic systems or treatment facilities. So that, that needs to be thought about as we look at where the districts might be located and where the most suitable areas are for a district to be located or any of the overlay districts, because I think we're all anticipating that um it would be very difficult for Easton to have fifty acres of contiguous land that could be developed um with the density that is um required.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie.
Is, okay, I just wanted to make sure that answered your question.
It did, it did. Thank you.
So I, I have, I have a, a lot of questions. I'm not gonna ask them all tonight. I'm glad I'm, I'm part of this group, because I will. I'm, I need to sleep on a lot of this and think about a lot of this. There was a lot of information, not only information to, to digest, but just this, this whole thing is, uh, it's, it's a really big deal. The state coming in telling you that you have to create this zone, um, fifty acres, nine hundred and thirteen units. Um, where does it go? Uh, there's, I, I have a lot going on in my head right now, to be honest. So uh, I gotta think about it. But out of the gate, uh, Stephanie, who, who approves this? Uh, we need to, it's, it, you mentioned we need to be a, a community that abides by this, but who approves that? Is that something done at town meeting? Is that the select board?
So again, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna answer your question by talking a little bit about how I see this unfolding. And again, this, this can change as the task force forms and you get more input. But how I would see this unfolding is that the task force does its work, starts the process, develops the action plan. And then at that point, because it's zoning, that it could, it be sent to the um zoning board. Uh, I'm sorry, the planning board for development, just like any other um zoning. And your action plan needs to incorporate, you're going to have to have public outreach and get input from the public similar to what we do usually through um the planning board meetings, we get input on the zoning uh amendments and recommendations, but it would go through the same process. Um, there is going to be technical assistance available to communities to help the communities write their zoning. I think we should take advantage of that, whether it's to write the zoning or give some guidance, maybe help out with the public input sessions. And then it, yes, it ultimately has to go to town meeting for adoption. Then it, you'll remember, in the timeline, once it's adopted at town meeting, it does have to be approved by um the Department of Housing and Community Development. So uh, and again, I think along the way, as the zoning is being written and um developed, that we would want to check in and, and make sure that it was going to comply, because you won't, don't want to get to the end of the process and adoption, and then have them send it back and say, you need to change something, or it's not going, you know, this isn't going to fly.
Um, and this might be a question for, and thank you for that. Uh, and this might be a question for, you know, that, that task force as we start to go through this. Um, what happens if the town doesn't adopt it?
Then the town is not eligible for um some of the, the, the funding that's available through the One Stop For Growth Funding, in particular, the Housing Choice Capital Grant Funding and the um Mass Works Infrastructure Funding. Now, the town has benefited from the Housing Choice Initiative. We were, I think we were the second town to be approved as a housing choice community, um, and that was, that program was advanced. And we have received two grants. Uh, I don't, we might actually have a third grant. Um, I know Wayne's on, and he, he has handled those that have helped pay for design work for the, I think it was for the sewer and on um the Furnace Village or Five Corners District Sewer, and also for the current um design work that's starting for the roadway improvements on Foundry Street. But the Mass Works Grant, Easton has benefited dramatically from the uh Mass Works Grant Program, several million dollars over the past eight years, I think. And that funding, you would no longer be eligible for that funding. That, that is, that is the penalty.
Yeah, um, a lot to think about. Thank you.
Jamie?
Stephanie, do, what's the ballpark? How many acres is Avalon one, Avalon two? And do we have contiguous? I'm just curious. What is the density there?
The density, I, I know the density. Wayne and I have been talking about this, and I'm sure he's doing. He, he's actually in the background, and I can hear him ping me. It, so the density is fifteen units per acre at Avalon. I don't know what the total acreage is. It's, it's well under what's required for the um, the total land area.
So you mean it's well under twenty-five?
Uh, yes, let's see. So let's see, about twenty-one acres.
Wow, so that's closer than maybe I thought, and um, could be used for some part of it though, right? Because then-
So with five, uh, if it's twenty-one acres, you add four more acres and you, it could have your, your um twenty-five acre contiguous area. And then we need to find um other areas, another twenty-five acres um in overlay districts.
And, and no less than five contiguous for that other. So, but that could spread us out over a significant geography. So we could have five acres in various parts of the town. So it, it, when I, when I think of it that way, it doesn't seem as difficult to get where we need to go. Um, I think this task force will, will be great. And yeah, one of the question I had, and Dottie, it's a little bit more maybe for you, is what is our assessment annually by the MBTA today?
Oh, come on, Jamie. I don't know that off the top.
I mean, is it roughly?
Man, tonight.
To the, to the closest hundred dollars?
Well, here's why I ask.
I'll find that out.
Oh, I'll find that out. It's a loaded question a little bit, but I'm curious, because I don't recall seeing it. So maybe the number isn't as significant as what I'm thinking. But if you told me it was a million dollars, which I don't think it is,
no.
Then my, my thought is that, yes, while the burden is on a lot of the surrounding communities like Mansfield and Stoughton, uh, because they've got direct access, or they have MBTA uh stations in their town, they also benefit because you get to park there as a resident where we don't. We pay when we show up. And, and it becomes very difficult for us to utilize that transportation because of that. So I was just curious. And, and if the number's so insignificant that this doesn't even matter, then it's a moot point. So, thank you.
Well, that doesn't really have anything to do with it, because we can't change that. We're, we're a designated MBTA adjacent community. So what we pay into that doesn't factor into this at all.
No, I, I get it. But it's also, what's the benefit of being an adjacent community when we don't reap the same? I, I, and I'm sure the burden is greater for their community than what we're, that was the only association I was trying to make there is what's the, you know, and I, I know we can't change it, but it's one I would certainly be interested in knowing more about.
Sure.
Dottie, if I could, just for point information, for the FY twenty-two cherry sheet, our assessment for MBTA is a hundred and sixty thousand.
I was just trying to find it on here, so thank you, Mike.
It's a hundred and sixty thousand plus the ability to uh apply for all those grants uh or through Mass Works, all that other stuff. So I mean, I think I'm, I know where you're going, Jamie, with the question. It's uh, if you don't do this, what is it that you're actually sacrificing? You know?
Several millions of dollars.
Yeah, we, I mean, but we need to really, you know, cut into the meat of that and analyze what it is we're sacrificing to make sure that the benefit outweighs the burden. Um, and that's what will be done in this group.
Yes, yes.
But if we don't do this, that hundred and sixty thousand, we have to pay that anyway. That's, that's
Uh, yeah.
I have a choice on that.
Understood. Um, still very important factors.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, so my first question, it kind of builds on what Mark's question was, which is um, let's say we proceed or in compliance, everything is, you know, we have the district, everything's all set up, and then we fall out of compliance, because for some reason a site is deemed unusable for whatever purpose. It's developed in another way or whatnot. Like, what do we have to do?
That's an excellent ques- question. I mean, once you adopt the district, you're in compliance.
Okay.
Because remember, I, I said, it's not a mandate to build. You don't have to go finding developers who are now going to build that number of units. You just have to have the capability to do it.
So even if the site gets developed by something else, we were in compliance. Okay, that's actually clarifies quite a bit. Um.
Well, that's a, that's a good question. If it, if it gets built, you, it can't, if you allow it to be built, let's say you have a mixed-use district. Um, you, in order to be in compliance, you're going to have to structure your zoning such that the mixed use doesn't take up all the space of the um multifamily development, because it, it has to be reasonable that it can, can be developed. You don't have to develop it, but you have to have the ability um for it to be developed. And then I think if, if the town were to change it. So a- again, I thought it was a good question, because as I was preparing for the presentation tonight, I was thinking about that. Well, what happens if you fall out of compliance? And I answered the question the way I just answered it for you, that um you, you need, you need to have the ability to develop to this density. But let's say the town um changed the zoning, voted to change the zoning, then that's, what is the penalty? I, I think the penalty is then you're out of compliance and whatever programs they have carried forward, because it could be several years from now and new administrations, they change those grant programs. Um, but I'm sure they will keep a penalty that then the town would suffer.
And the other question I had then was wrapping my head, because I'm thinking through this, I'm looking at the numbers and thinking about how this relates to forty B and our requirements to stay on top of that, and how the two can be used in sync to address those requirements that we have from another statute. So um, there's a kind of potential two for there, that if we have to do this anyway.
Right, and, and that's why when we first read the zoning, uh, the guidelines, the guidelines don't talk to affordability. And we weren't alone in saying, well, wait a minute, you, you have this, it, it's a mandate in a way, right?
Yeah.
And yet we, we also have this other um requirement to have an S- requirement to have an SHI that's at ten percent of the total housing stock. Can't, how do these two work together, you know, because that's a lot of housing if you can't count it towards affordability. So again, the preliminary answer, it's not in the guidelines, but it, they have said that you can have um, an affordability um, requirement. And probably the best way to make that work, and that can be discussed more as the task force works together, is probably if you want to have an, and, and it's frequently called inclusionary zoning, where communities have that affordability requirement, to have that type of inclusionary um, zoning requirement as part of your district that following the, the twenty-five uh, percent for ownership and twenty percent of um, uh, rental at um, the, I mean, I think it's eighty percent median real income would probably make sense. And that, that should help keep the town in compliance because the more units you add, the more you need to have at the affordable and the SHI.
And just the last thing I would say as a comment, I know people, uh, you know, a lot of times hear multifamily housing or affordable housing, and there's a bit of panic. You know, not in my backyard. Um, but we literally just watched a presentation where we were talking about an age-friendly community, and as I'm listening to this, I'm hearing a lot of benefits that, you know, if you think about what we just saw Kathy present on, there's a lot of connections here. And I, I think we have to be mindful that there's this stigma that doesn't o- often pan out, like people perceive it to be. Um, so this isn't something to be scared. I think we just have to, you know, think about it in a mindful kind of pragmatic way. And start to connect the dots and look at the tools we have in our toolkit as we think about how we can leverage, um, you know, what we have in this community with the things on our plate to achieve some of the goals and outcomes we have as a community. So, it's just a general comment.
Good point, Jen.
I have to say, I've been talking to a lot of communities and a lot of other elected boards and committees in other towns. And I, I, I just am blown away by the really smart questions tonight, um, especially from some, from Jen and Jamie that have not been on the board that long, really like understanding this very quickly and um, really great questions. So, um, I think that, you know, the way that Easton has always tackled big issues is to be proactive and get out in front of it and you know, assembling this task force is a great idea to get everybody on this right away. It's gonna be, it's gonna be some work. There's not a lot of time before we have to get the um, the public comments in by March thirty-first. But that's what this task force is gonna, you know, look at and unveil, you know, is it possible to do this? Um, what are our best efforts? How does that impact all of these other things? And really look at it from a big perspective. Um, so, as you know, the Mass Municipal Association has their annual meeting every year in January. And this was gonna be one of the workshops, and unfortunately due to COVID, um, the MMA had to cancel that um, that conference at the last minute. But what they are doing is over the next couple of weeks, they'll be having the workshops, many of the workshops that were supposed to be at the conference, they're gonna have them as free webinars uh, for municipal officials. So on February second at nine thirty, and I'll send everybody an email to just, you know, let them know this, but you probably got an email from them directly. There's a workshop February second at nine thirty, um, by the Department of Housing and Community Development, just to talk about this. There's gonna be a few times over, over the next month and a half, two months, where DHCD will be having presentations to talk about this. So when you hear it the first time and then you hear it the second time, you, you start to uh, think about it a little bit differently and understand more of it. I've heard it several times before now, and my first reaction was like, wait, what? You know? And uh, I think that when we start to learn a little bit more about it, we'll see that we're gonna be able to um, you know, thoughtfully manage this and still stay in compliance. Um, the compliance issues really won't impact us. Like in Stephanie's pr- um, presentation, this was step one. Step two is to um, to have the public um, comment. And then step three is to um, there's a line, there's a thing on their website that you have to fill out this little survey, send them the map, and um, what's the third one, Stephanie?
Uh, that actually was the, the, the third one, yeah. And then providing, providing the public comment. So you covered all of them. Yeah.
So that keeps us in compliance for this next round of grant funding anyways, we'll still be eligible for it. So there's gonna be some communities that say, you know what, we don't want the grant funding, we don't care. And, you know, I don't think Easton's one of them because we have become very accustomed to receiving those big grants. So um, it's, it's a great proposal for the committee, and um, I think that we'll just tackle it head-on like we do with everything else. So, um, well, the next item on here, if nobody has anything else, is um, it includes the MBTA community's task force charge. So the mission is to review, understand, and discuss the draft guidelines as they apply to Easton to identify the most likely suitable areas to locate a by right multifamily district as required by the MBTA community statute, and to prepare draft comments to the MBTA draft guidelines for submittal to DHCD. And the membership is essentially the chairs of numerous boards and committees. Um, the task force is gonna be appointed for a period of two months, which is effectively from the time of appointment. Uh, but that period can be extended if necessary, um, for a specific um, uh, reason at the discretion of the select board. And the task force is gonna review, understand, and discuss the draft guidelines as they apply to Easton, consider and discuss elements of guidelines that may be missing, for example, of there's the affordability requirement. Consider and comment on areas most likely suited to comprise overlay district. Identify significant development constraints, for example, capacity to treat wastewater, physical constraints such as wetlands and topography. And draft comments on the guidelines to present to the select board for submission to DHCD, and determine and recommend likely suitable locations required by right in the multifamily district.
And Dottie, Dottie, I'd like to add as the last item on that list you just read, um, develop the action plan.
Okay, and develop the action plan. So, um, let me just go back for a second. We have the names listed.
So Dottie, do we have to do the establish the committee charge first and then do the, the membership?
Logically, that makes perfect sense.
Yes, we, we set it up as two separate votes. Number eight is establishing the team by adopting the charge. And then number nine would be the appointment once you do that.
Okay, so that's, there I found it. So it would be me as the chair of the select board, Greg Strange as chair of the planning board, Nikki DeStumian as chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, Rory Calphaltz as chair of the Conservation Commission, Mark Lamb as chair of the Economic Development Council, Patrick Helen as chair of the Finance Committee, Michelle Durant as chair of the School Committee, Connor Reed or Michael Blanchard as um, representing the town administration. Stephanie Danielson is director of Planning and Economic Development. Leisha Cabral as the school superintendent at her, her discretion, and Chief Justin Alexander um, of the Fire Department will be the ones on this committee. So, um, I'd be looking for a motion to establish this committee charge.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
A C S.
And full gen- full genetti, yes. And um, and so then the next vote would be to appoint those um, members nominated as a slate.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, Lamb.
We can do it by a slate, by roll call then? Okay, so B- Barger slate.
Lamb slate.
Evans slate.
A C slate.
And full genetti slate. So, thank you for being here, Stephanie. We appreciate that. Uh, a lot of information to absorb and you know, these meetings, when this committee starts to meet, um, people, you know, if people are interested, they can, they can join the meetings. They are gonna be public meetings. Um, we invite people to send their comments and questions. Um, every little bit helps in these kind of discussions.
Particularly, Dottie, if, when it goes to the town meeting, we, we want people to be aware of all the work that's been done and the rationale behind it.
Right. We'll be talking about this for a while.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Have a good night, Stephanie.
Okay, um, next we have the contract award for Industrial Protection Services for breathing air compressors on the Eastern Fire Department twenty-two dash oh-three. Mark, will you want to tell us about this one?
Sure, I can speak to this. So this is a new uh, breathing air compressor, which I, in the full disclosure, I had to ask Chief Alexander what that was. This is actually the machine that fills the individual tanks uh, that the firefighters wear. Uh, and the good news is the total contract is seventy thousand dollars. However, sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars is being paid through a federal grant. Uh, in town meeting, actually discrimination anticipated, so it's how meeting already approved capital funding of six thousand, three hundred and sixty-four for the balance of that. Um, so it's, it's a pretty good deal, uh, and I'd recommend your approval.
Questions from the board?
I have none.
All right, we'll take a motion to award uh, this contract to Industrial Protection Services for breathing air compressors um, for EFD twenty-two dash zero-three.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
A C S.
And full genetti, yes. Next is a vote to acknowledge a vacancy on the Easton Shovel Town Cultural District Management Partnership Team. Uh, this term expires June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. As uh, this board knows and some of the members of the public know, um, the chair of that committee, Carolyn Cole, unexpectedly passed away um, on January sixth. It was quite a surprise and um, you know, Carolyn's just been a real, you know, we've been talking about the spirit of volunteerism tonight, and Carolyn was a longtime volunteer. Um, I just wanna mention a couple of, of things uh, that she did. Uh, Carolyn was a beloved leader in the community of Easton. As chair of the Easton Shovel Town Cultural District, she established the Art Cooperative, where local artisans display and sell their crafts. The annual Legacy Festival with jury art exposition, exhibition, the annual Artisans Fair and Holiday Tea. She was instrumental in starting the foodie group at Ames Free Memorial Library and in assisting other local libraries and starting their own groups. She served as a trustee at Oaks Ames Memorial Hall and an advisor for the Eastern Legacy Fund. She was active in the Easton's Grange and the Lions Club. She was also a political activist and involved with Citizens for an Informed Community. So Carolyn is, is gonna leave big shoes to fill. Um, she was a personal friend of mine and I'm still, just can't even believe that, that uh, this happened. And uh, she'll be greatly missed by everyone in this community for all her contributions. Um, so, we normally, if somebody resigns, we have to acknowledge um, their resignation. And sadly, in this case, we need to uh, vote to acknowledge the vacancy. So we would do that uh, in a roll call, vote to acknowledge the vacancy, and then we will post um, the vacant seat for um, for a volunteer to join the committee. So if um, it would be a roll call vote. So Craig, if you want to make a motion?
To, to acknowledge the uh, the death of, of Carolyn Cole, um, and our, the loss in the community. So moved.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, Cole.
Lamb with regret, Cole.
Evans, Cole.
A C Cole.
And full genetti Cole. And uh, we also express our condolences to Carolyn's family and friends and everyone that loved her. Um, next, a discussion and vote for Appointment of Records Access Officer and the update of Easton's Public Records Access Guidelines.
Thanks, Dottie. So um, I, I think I'm kind of just treating this as, as housekeeping. Uh, back in two thousand sixteen and seventeen, the state passed new public records and laws, uh, which require towns to appoint records access officers. By default, the town clerk is one. Uh, but back in two thousand seventeen, the select board at that time appointed a number of individuals in various departments. Um, the intention was to, as opposed to everything going through the town clerk's office, if you request for the police department, you can go right to the police department. So it's a good customer service thing. Um, the difficulty is, from the town clerk's perspective, is that the appointments were made by name. So the police chief at the time, the fire chief at the time, and a lot of those names are now changed. So the town clerk has recommended that the select board um, essentially reappoint uh, the records access officers, but do it by position, title. Without allowing her to do is, as positions people change positions, it would automatically update in our records, in our guidelines. So if they're more willing to consider that, um, there is a list. Um, I, perhaps you could do, uh, appoint the areas as presented in the TA notes, and then the town clerk will be able to make those changes going forward. And it is all the same uh, positions. There's no changes here, just, just leaving out the names of the individual that currently serve.
Sure. It's interesting when uh, when a requirement comes up and you answer the requirement, and then afterwards you find out how do you need to tweak that because of, you know, issues like this. When this first came out, we wouldn't have really thought too much about, you know, you, you'd name people by name, but um, you know, this makes a lot of sense to do it this way. Craig, do you want to make a motion to um, vote to appoint the slate as record access officers as noted in the um, in the town administrator notes?
So moved, Barger.
Barger, Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
A C S.
And full genetti, yes. Terrific. And item thirteen, I can't believe it's time to do this again, but we need to go to open the annual town meeting warrant uh, for May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Feels like we just did this a couple of weeks ago.
Ti- time flies when you're having fun.
Absolutely.
Uh, so as Dottie said, you know, the town charter uh, says it'll be the uh, third Monday of May, which is May sixteenth this year. So I propose that the board vote to open the uh, annual town meeting warrant with a suggested closing date of Tuesday, February twenty-second. Um, it's actually an error in the T note, it should be twenty-twenty-two at uh, four-thirty PM for the submission of warrant articles. And as always, uh, tomorrow, if, should you vote this, we'll send out a memo to department heads and board of committee chairs advising them that it is open about that deadline.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Craig, do you want to make the motion to open the warrant?
Let's open the warrant for the May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two town meeting.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
A C S.
Full genetti, yes. Terrific. Next is the acceptance of the minutes of January tenth, twenty-twenty-two. That's a typo, and it's hard to get used to doing, doing the twenty-twenty-twos. I probably wouldn't have even noticed it if you hadn't noticed it in the one before, Michael. Um, anybody uh, have any questions or comments on the minutes? All right, Craig, would you like to make-
We'll, we'll accept the minutes of January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
A C S.
And full genetti, yes. Any notes from you, Michael?
Just one, so I don't have a formal COVID presentation tonight. Uh, unfortunately, not a whole lot has changed since last time. Things are still kind of roaring out there. Uh, unfortunately, Easton, um, although we were hoping for a downturn, last week's numbers show we continue to climb in our cases of COVID. We're hoping this week, which will come out Wednesday, may show some improvement. Um, but, yeah, our efforts continue to offer public testing in booster clinics. Uh, as you may uh, recall, I think I sent an email to the board last week. Unfortunately, due to lack of supply from the state, we had to cancel what really has become kind of a weekly testing we've offered. I'm happy to report uh, that we have obtained some supplies. We are offering another date this week. Uh, it was shared um, on our uh, website and social media, just, I think, just maybe even after this meeting started. Uh, but for the public's benefit, it's Wednes- this Wednesday, which is the twenty-sixth, at Frothingham Hall from four to six. And you can visit our website, there's a big pop-up for our COVID nineteen page. If you click that, you can uh, click and register. We're also having another booster clinic, uh, Moderna Vaccination Booster Clinic, which is uh, this Friday, the twenty-eighth. And that'll be from two to three at Frothingham Hall. And again, you can click the registration link on our COVID pages while the site is open.
Great, thank you so much, and really appreciate all, all the work that you've done uh, behind the scenes to help with these uh, clinics and testing and, and vaccination. So um, keep up the great work.
I appreciate it. The real, real team effort. Uh, people have come together and uh, there continues to be a demand. I mean, the testing clinics sell out uh, within, within a couple hours. So clearly, demand's still there. So we're happy to do it as long as we have the supply.
Great, thank you. Select board notes, Craig, any comments, questions?
I have nothing right now.
I have a couple, uh, comments. So, uh, first, I'd like to, um, point out and congratulate the, uh. The current ambassador to Ireland, Claire Cronin. Um, I don't believe Easton has ever had a, a United States ambassador of a foreign country. They may have, I don't know, but, uh, not in my lifetime. So, uh, regardless of your politics, this is incredible. Uh, Easton has, somebody who lives in Easton, our former rep. Is ambassador to a, a European nation. Absolutely incredible. As a, also a citizen of Ireland, uh, and the US, I'm especially proud. Um, and the other thing I'd like to point out is, so the other day I was paying my bills online, exercise bills. And I don't know if any of you have done this, but when you do it, uh, as you pay your bill, uh, the very first thing that comes up is donation. You can actually click on the link that says, says donation, vehicle exercise, personal property. Um, and it's for the senior and disabled tax relief fund, which is, which is, it makes it so easy. So, um, you know, we, I, in the vein of us talking about the presentation earlier tonight. I wanna, uh, share with people how easy it is and where that money goes. And it actually does go to help seniors for a tax relief fund, um, because they are feeling the pinch. Uh, and it is just really easy and check it out. That's my notes.
Thank you, Mark. Jamie.
I wanna thank Mark for plugging that, be, in letting me know, and that's fantastic. Cause it has been one of those things where you see it written on the hard copy, but nobody uses the hard copy anymore, right? We all go right to, uh, online, the website and we pay there. So now having it there, that's simple, that's fantastic. So, thanks. And just, um, to offer my condolences, um, Dottie, uh, to you regarding Carolyn, your friend and, and for a lot of you that were, uh, close to her. So I just wanted to, uh, extend my condolences.
Thanks, Jamie. Jen.
I have nothing for this week, but thank you.
Thank you. Well, thanks. This was a really productive, uh, evening. We got through a lot of really great information. And, uh, thank you to the people that stuck with us to the end. And, um, if with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
It's Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. Good night, everyone, and we will see you in a couple of weeks.
Good night.
Stay safe, everybody.